How are loads that we've had a number of discussions about? He sent me the quotes from Striker and from Osage. On the Osage quote is for the 2024 ambulance remount. And the Striker quote is for the auto load system that we've been talking about for at least a couple of months. I think he sent out videos to everybody.
I saw that today.
To view what those auto loads are. He presented this to the commissioners. The commissioners approved pulling that money out of American Rescue. It's approved through the original American Rescue plan through discussions. And I had him, or I asked him to maybe call each and every one of the council members to kind of explain a little bit in his absence. I'll try to muddle through the information that he's given to me. I guess at this point, he was looking at four auto load systems. For our three ambulance, our three main ambulances as well as the backup. The backup is the one that's going in next year for the remount. I think, and this is just my personal opinion. I think with the quote that he gave us on the floor, I would propose, I'm not forming this in a motion per se, but for discussion, three of the power loads for each one of the three ambulance buildings. So that each building has the power load system. If we do that, the power load brings down to 71,874. The further down on that quote, the upgrades are 4806. The install of 759 and the, I guess, load installation, which goes onto the ambulance, I believe, itself is 803. Per total of 78,252. The commissioners also, and that alleviates that $19,000 cost of the power cot. If we ended up getting the forum, I think we've already got two or three of those. So that is taken care of. And that alleviates the $19,000 power cot. The warranties, just in case anything goes wrong, 12,252. That would cost for three of them, which brings a total of 90,504. The remount, which I think is, I mean, he gave us a schedule somewhere of the remounts scheduled out until, I think, 2032, roughly thereabouts, of 91,000. So that brings it down to 181,504. Of course, the advertised amount, I would probably make a suggestion of 100, maybe 5,000 if we want to advertise out of American Rescue to make sure that everything's covered. That's my thought. Obviously, in somewhat in grand scheme of things, when you look at ambulance and the ambulance service we have in Carroll County, Doug, I think, has done an exceptionally frugal and efficient job in providing those services and managing the manpower, managing the equipment. We're already scheduled, I think, for a new ambulance in 2024. Going to save at least $100,000 in doing the remount. And pushing back, I think, a new ambulance for at least a couple more years. So that's my take on it. Any further discussion with the other council members? I would open up for discussion prior to actually making a motion.
I kind of got a different take from, a little bit different than that. If we have four, I thought we, he said that we were going to do two. And then the third one is going to, on schedule for 2024. And then the backup, we'd done in 20, at a later date, I'm not sure which week that was. So.
Oh, okay. Well, that may be.
Are you disputing the timeline or the amount in front of you?
Well, the amount, I.
Oh, actually, I thought.
I think he wants to go ahead and okay the whole amount, but it's not going to be spent till 2024. So that was my question to Scott is, why are we going, I mean, why aren't we just doing it for two? Why do we have to do the 2024 amount since it's a year and a half away?
Why advertise the entire amount now if we're not going to be using it for at least another couple of years?
Yeah, because like he, like he said, like the $19,000, we may, we probably are not going to have to use that. And then I thought we were only doing the two with the one being done in 2024. And so we really just need to advertise for the two, I thought.
Well, we'll give that to you on that one.
I have a question. So are you wanting him to come back and ask for more money later? Or the other two?
No, because the other, because the other two are already on the cycle to be replaced. So when they're being replaced, we, of course, would have them replaced with the equipment that he wants. So they're already on his replacement cycle. He wouldn't need funds to do it because he'd already have it according to his budget. That's how I took it. But I'm not sure why his number didn't change substantially. If that was, looking not being here to ask, I'm not sure.
Well, next year, if the 2014 Chevy gets moved out and onto a four-wheel drive. So that one, I understand. I was thinking of three because right now we could get all three, I mean, one for each station now. Because that, 2014, I think, currently is our backup. That's a two-wheel drive, not a four-wheel drive. That's the one that's going to be utilized as a backup. So that one would be equipped next year with that remount. We keep the same box, but we just remount it onto the chassis. That would be the fourth one next year. So that's why I backed them down from four to three. And then in 2024, in two years, that'll be a brand-new four-wheel drive cab or chassis and box. If that makes any sense. I would, I mean.
So you want to go ahead and redo the ones that are on par in his rotation? We do them anyway?
Yes, because, I mean, if we, if we do the 2014, which I don't know is necessary. I feel like proper to do the three that are what I call active, active-service vehicles right now. One for each station, one for four.
Which ones are in the rotation to do next year?
The backup, the 2014.
And that's 2024?
No, 2023.
You have a schedule in front of you?
It's, it's the backup, the two-wheel drive backup for the remount. That won't be a new one, that'll be a remount. And then in 2024, when we get the new one, one of the ones reutilized, one of the three reutilizing now will go down to a backup. So by 2024, if we get the new four-wheel drive, all even backups, the three main and a backup, it'd be all four-wheel drive with the load system. I'll make a motion that we advertise $185,000 out of American Rescue.
This is already advertised.
Yeah, we do not have to re-advertise.
Okay, it is advertised, isn't it?
Is advertised up to 232.8?
Okay.
So he can appropriate anything up there?
Up to that, that 232. I make a motion that we would appropriate $185,000 to.
20 minutes.
Yep. Sure. I make a motion that we appropriate $185,000 for three of the load systems as well as the $91,000, that includes the remount for 2023 out of American Rescue plan for ambulance.
Are you saying you won't spend it?
Three load systems and one remount.
Yeah, the $185,000 includes three of the load systems and the $91,000 remount.
Are you saying they won't spend it till 2023? Because we can't, like, we can appropriate whatever for. You're either going to have to have a cover or.
Yeah, it's going to be 2024. You're going to go out two years.
You can't appropriate next year.
20, 2023.
No, before the meeting, he told me it was 2024.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, I mean, you can appropriate it.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but if this is just dated in the plan for him to be able to order it because he said he can get them right away also.
Right.
But we just need to get part of our plan, plan. If it's in, if it's in the plan, it can automatically come because of the plan.
Automatically in come?
If it's in the plan, you don't have to do a new cover. The plan is like the edit plan. If you have a project that is in the edit plan and you appropriate it, the project goes into the next year, that automatically carries forward because it's in the edit plan. In the art plan, if it's in the art plan, that's money is being spent for that. And it carries until the project is done. That, that's a project in the art.
We've never budgeted that at that point, so.
What about two years to 2024?
The plan is, the plan is.
I know, I thought I said this was really, we've not done it that way.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
So you're saying he's going to still spend the 232.8 away? I was under the assumption that it was down to four.
This is going to be an accounting nightmare because like we're throwing out a number for stuff that we're going to buy two years in advance, you know, contract.
Exactly.
This is not, this is going to be a, is any of the stuff being bought today?
I would presume he had to order it, the auto load system. It's hard to get it, and he had to order it, I thought.
What time was this going?
He did mention to me before he left that if you guys wanted to push it off till next month, he's finally pushing it off till next month, so you guys.
Move the table.
That's what I heard said, so, you know?
Move the table.
Okay.
And I will have him, you can have it bring it updated on paper because we're going off all this old stuff. And then like before the meeting, this is on the line, not going to be that $19,000.
Right, he's talking on the, on the auto, not the auto load, but on the power.
Is that your suggestion?
I'm going to suggest that we start meeting at nine o'clock because we have someone at this book for like years at noon.
Aye.
And they're going to be coming in. And then I guess the redevelopment is going to be at 1:30 and, yeah.
What meeting are we talking about now?
It's somebody else, it's somebody else that had weight on us last month. And we can, we've never had two-hour meetings before. And we're getting, we're still, we're still going strong here.
I'm going to say the same thing as I said last week. If it doesn't get done.
Raise your hand.
I've got a motion on the floor to table ambulance and equipment, second. Those in favor?
I haven't been to a meeting.
Aye, aye, those opposed, sign. Motion is tabled.
We have a lovely new meeting going, everything is new. What a nice deal.
Okay, next item is Q Bridge, other road equipment.
Good morning. I'd like to transfer money from our big Q Bridge fund, which stands at $2,239,000 right now, to take out money for other road equipment, two trucks, $310,000. Total would be a tandem axle dump and a one-and-a-half-ton dump. These are on our Culver crew, which they replace Culverts and work on the bridges for maintenance. So these vehicles are able to be pulled from the King Bridge right now.
Kent, can you remind the council the age of the trucks that will be replaced?
It ranges from 20 years to 25. They're all vehicles. Motion to move the 310,000. Additional, appropriate.
Second.
I'm just going to state for the record, I know this is my minority opinion, but I don't think a single member of this council has an idea if this continues, this level of spending continues, what five years from now our account balance is going to look like. And I don't think that I have gotten a satisfactory answer on what improved outcomes we will have from these additional expenditures. So I just want to state for the record that I do not think that enough research has been applied here. And that there are, if we, if we continue to do this, there will be negative legislative consequences.
We did ask for that last meeting.
I did.
Did anybody do what Josh requested? Did you meet with Kent and talk to him?
So Kent is my department. As I stated last meeting, I've been out there, I've toured the facility. He gave me a spreadsheet of the age of all of their entire fleet and the plan that they have to systematically try and replace and update that fleet. What Josh requested was some kind of a cost analysis specific to the miles of road that would be updated in relation to the new equipment and the cost of the new equipment that's been bought. I do not have that specifically. Kent just emailed this week a breakdown of the number of miles of road that we're responsible for and the age of the trucks that are in service currently. So we do have data. I will concede, it's not the data that Josh asked for last month, but this is not a decision without its homework and due diligence. And I will also say, like, I have always taken a stance of prudence and have been opposed to recent spending. That being said, we don't treat other departments and their vehicles with the same obstacle and hindrance that we treat the highway department. And I firmly believe it's because the previous superintendent set a precedent of buying used and second-hand stuff that when it came across our desks, we didn't get sticker shock. And so now we've been conditioned to raise flags at the sticker price of new equipment versus old outdated used second-hand equipment. We don't set that same, we don't hold that, other departments to that same standard. Nobody has ever asked any other department to go out and price used vehicles. Yeah, I'm done.
This amount is more than, I'm going to say 90% of the department's entire budget. The 310,000 dollars. I would say that's probably more than 90% of our department's entire year budget. And this is one trend, or one additional appropriation. I, I don't, I am entirely open-minded to hearing this argument that newer equipment is going to have some better outcome. But that is, that was what I brought upon the council, that buying newer vehicles will give the taxpayer more returns for their tax dollars. Nobody's saying it's going to be better roads, that they're going to have more uptime. More uptime means more, but that is not being quantified. And so we're asking, what we're asking, I mean, what is being asked for is, are we willing to spend $300,000? And this is, this is just one additional. I mean, the plan, if you remember back last budget, to take our average age of a vehicle from 20-ish years old or whatever the number was.
17.
17, just seven. And so that is a more expensive fleet period. So we're saying, now, we have a more expensive fleet, we're going to spend more new money. Do we get anything for the money? And that's the question, I mean, we have to, like, from my perspective, we have to answer that question before we start spending taxpayer money on this.
I think you did answer that question because these two vehicles are trashed, right? They are non-operable.
Well, well.
So you don't operate and you don't get new equipment. You're not going to get roads fixed.
That's.
Right?
No, I don't think that's.
Those two vehicles are non-operable. Their bed fell off and something else with the other one?
Not, not those two, but they're at the point where.
Yes.
So those aren't the two that you're replacing, the ones that are non-operable?
We've got two on order that will replace those right now.
So this is for another two?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Like, trying, like, these are the things that we said no to at budget.
Yeah, I thought this was, I thought this was.
Yeah, I had three that I had washed last month.
So you're trying to get them all replaced at once?
That's a lot of.
No, 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 no. I feel like that's an inaccurate statement.
It's a step-by-step process.
He asked for four vehicles? If he has two on order and these are two, that's four vehicles.
Right, you're talking about what's the lead time on a vehicle right now if you could get it ordered?
Minimum eight months.
Okay.
If we provide an order.
So the idea, I just want to be clear. What you just said, the way this could be interpreted or heard or printed, is you're trying to replace everything all at once? No.
No, I said, what do you, four vehicles?
There's a systematic approach to replacing vehicles over a period of time.
Yeah, we have a 10-year plan for replacing vehicles.
So now, I completely agree with what Josh is saying. This is a large amount of money in respect to the annual budget that we put forth. I would also suggest that, I wasn't for this at budget time because I didn't understand the plan. And so I didn't have a full idea or understanding of what Kent was trying to accomplish.
So if in his plan, there were four vehicles that were to be replaced this year, why wasn't that addressed at budget time?
We've got funding for two. We've ordered those two.
So those two are ordered. So I would assume the next part of your plan would be for next year to get the other two. I'm not assuming why we have to do all four now this year.
But he lost three vehicles in Iraq and a bed fell off.
Those are already replaced.
Those, two of them of the three have been replaced.
And you have two on order?
Well, the two are on order to replace those.
So you're down one truck.
Right now, we're down three. I don't get the other two.
You have two on order that are coming.
Eventually, yeah. It's just an eight-month process.
You can't speed it up, so they are coming, they're ordered, they're coming. So you're down one truck.
Okay. Once they get here, you're down one truck.
Yes, but you're asking for two.
Of those, right. It's hard to keep these vehicles on the road.
Sure.
I've got more that are ready to go down, so.
But they're not down.
And we're spending a fortune on, on.
We can quantify.
How much is it roughly about?
Please.
We did that at budget time.
We did not.
It's, it's three to.
Like, what's, and that's why, like, this again, we have not quantified what downtime costs us. Like, so what we have downtime is less road getting paid? The data says no. Is the cost more? I don't know what I'm talking about. Like, I agree.
Out of these two trucks, which one is the most adamant that you get now? And what is the cost?
It's probably the tandem that's used for carrying stone to all the Culverts and pulling our backup.
Which is the cost of what?
The tandem is 185.
I would, I would make a motion to table it. There is a motion on, okay, I apologize.
And also, he's done a good job of getting the money from King Bridge, where I don't ever remember that, you know, buying trucks out of King Bridge fund, which we got $249,000 in King Bridge. Remember, Tracy, we talked about this, that's a good thing to get the money and use it out of King Bridge to.
What are you going to do when you need it?
Well, we will probably sell plenty of money in the next five years.
The bridges that will be rehabilitated are in the neighborhood of $250,000.
I, I'm going to say again, if, if the answer is we got plenty of money, let's see it. Like, let's see the actual consequences of this level of spending over a five- or 10-year period and look at it instead of just saying, we got money, we're going to spend it. That is the exact thing that happened in 2007, 2008. And that was not a fun time to be alive. No, please, no, please.
Those were additionals. Those were additionals that were willy-nilly, they came in and everybody just didn't talk about it. You're right, you're right on some of that, but this has been talked about.
This is not talked about.
You're talking about.
From my perspective.
Call it or not.
Okay. A motion on the floor to approve $310,000. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second is in.
Oh, okay. Motion on the floor up here, signed by Ethan Brown. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Carries four to two. Thank you.
I move to approve NDA restrictions. For additional.
Motion bridge?
Vote.
I will second also. Now, motion is second to approve the two NDA restrictions. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Carries six, zero.
We were told we could pull that one.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Wait, wait, I draw my motion. Can we approve the appointments? Yeah. I move to approve the Tino Bola appointments.
Motion to approve Tino Bola appointments by Josh Crew, signed by Ethan Brown. Is there one more, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those same sign.
Move to adjourn.
Motion second.
Adjourn, those in favor, signify, aye.
Aye. Good seeing you. Good seeing you guys. Yeah, thanks, have a good one.
I don't have much time.
New development commission? I need to go to that soon.
They are going to start meeting at 1:30.
Well, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Starting in.
I didn't get.
It was at the meeting. Remember, Josh brought it up.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, in August.
Yeah, in August.
We haven't had July yet.
No. And I brought it up that.
Next week will be the week of the.
You know, that the council usually. You know, that the council usually moves the July meeting because of the four each week.
Right, right. I remember that part now.
And that's why we just left
I'm pretty wide open next Thursday.
Where it was.
Would you have availability like?